May is now called over if you would join Vice Chairman Langley as he does our invocation, and Commissioner Booth will do our pledge. Thank you.
We are to the right of the United States of America and to the government which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder, if you have a cell phone, please either turn it off or put it into silent mode at this time. I'd like to ask if any of the Commissioners have a conflict of interest on any items on the night's agenda. Hearing none, we're moving on. And a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Six. All those opposed? No vote. Items for decisions, Christina.
I'd like to give you an update this evening on the upgrade for the locking system in the Beaufort County Detention Center. If you recall, the past few meetings, I've given you updates regarding our discussions with Montgomery Technology Systems, which is the company that responded to our request for proposals. I reviewed their proposal in detail. There were some additional items that we wanted clarification on. A technician visited the Beaufort County Detention Center last week, and so they've been giving us some updated pricing through various conversations, texts, emails, back and forth with NTS today. We have gone through each of the almost, there's actually 96 openings in the facility, that we've gone through to make sure that we clarified the final function of those openings. And we believe we have it done as what it should be and what staff would like it to be in order to be a safe and functioning facility. Based upon that, the total construction cost, which would also include the contract with Montgomery Technology Systems, it also includes assistance with permitting. Also, if you'll recall, there's been discussion about the involvement of Department of Health and Human Services, how much they will actually be involved in this project. It is our understanding that it will require a submission of plans to them for their approval. So we do have some things there in case we need to contract with an architect in order to assist us with that. And then also a 10% contingency. Summing those numbers together, the total construction cost for the project is at $905,300. The estimated cost associated with alternative housing of the inmates is an additional $630,000. There's a budget amendment attached for $1,535,300. Questions you have regarding the specifics of the scope of work regarding the locking upgrade system?
Commissioner Waters.
Christina, in that $798,000, is that all for the sliders and the hardware, or is there any money in there for the, what I call the old power plant? Which is the original electrical stuff there where the controls are?
The controls, a breakdown of that, which was included in the base bid, would be the controls, which would include the hardware as well as the software, so what the detention officers would operate when they are sitting in the control station of the facility. And they would be able to look at a computer screen and see if a door is secure or unsecure. That is included, the base bid of $320,000. Then there was an alternate bid regarding, it was fee passes of $9,500. And then an alternate number two of some changes that would be made to the exterior on the east end of the facility in order to make it a more secure door. And then the slider doors, it's a cost of approximately $460,000.
So all of that's in the $798?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Christina, I know it's hard to, I haven't read all the document, maybe, but this is a very old building. Why would they should not change orders? Cool it down, cool it down. But is there a warranty of this guy's work?
The warranty that was included in the RFP is a one-year warranty. But what that generally covers is the workmanship and the software, things along those lines. It does not include if there is tampering by the inmates, if there's destructive behavior, and something along those lines. That is not covered under the warranty.
So if this gentleman, if this gentleman did what he has contracted with him doing, it still don't fix the problem, we just owe him $967,000?
Depends on which problem you're referring to. You're referring to that when they close a door and the latch does not engage and the door is not secure, that would be covered under the warranty. Because he is replacing the sliding devices and he's replacing the locking mechanisms so that that should drop and latch and it would be secure, so that would be covered under the one-year warranty.
Christina, are these new sliders or when he says reworked, we're taking?
The sliders, it is new sliding devices, which if you'll recall from the scope review meeting that we had, learning about what hardware people, hardware lingo, a new sliding device entails what is housed up above the slider doors. If you've been in the facility, you'll see the board, the board sliding doors. And then up above that, there's a metal box approximately, I guess you'd say 15 by 15 inches wide and deep. And inside of that housing is the actual sliding device. So what he is, will be replacing is the actual sliding device. You may have seen the video that was included, which shows a lot of gears. That is the part that would be replaced in its entirety.
So we went running into the problem, as he had mentioned, with paper getting, the inmates putting paper and a comb and can render the sliders non-functional?
I cannot say that it will 100% prevent it, but it should make it, that problem should be lessened than what it currently is. Again, he's looking at the type of, the way that the locks will engage will be different so that it will minimize that.
Commissioner Richardson.
One question procedurally. Who's taking the minutes for this meeting?
We're taking notes, and then Katie will use the video to do the official minutes.
So the meeting is being videoed?
Yes, it is.
Can this meeting be put up on the system for the public to see?
Just like all the others, yes, sir.
Okay, but we voted on, none of the rest of the budget meetings have been put up for the public to see?
You're talking about the work sessions, the board voted not to do the work sessions.
That's right. But this one will go to the public?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just like you asked for.
All right. With my statement, if an architect or an engineer is hired, I want to be in every meeting, and I want to be notified of every meeting prior to in advance so I can be sure that I'm there.
I will notify you of every meeting.
Any other question?
Mr. Bryan. I was looking on here, and I don't see where they said if we approve this, that when they start working, when they expect to be completed?
The article includes approximately a six-month completion time. That's based upon eight to 16 weeks of lead time or delivery time. So once we finalize the scope, get the contract written, the completion time would be six months from that point, from an executed and signed contract.
Are they gonna have to work on weekends because of the court sessions?
I do not know the answer to that. We're hoping that a lot of this work will not cause a lot of loud noises and disruption. If it does, then we will work with the court system to minimize that. Again, I'm not 100% sure exactly what the work hours will be. What we've told NTS is that Beaufort County would do everything that we can in order to expedite their completion. So once we get to the point if there is a lot of cutting or torching or something that inmates would not be able to be there, we would then relocate, relocate them to a different facility, and then the facility would be open to NTS 24 hours a day for them to get to complete their work.
Is the judge, the judge is doing that, that we're gonna start working on the jail?
I have not spoken with the judges. I can only assume that they know because they are very well aware of the fact that inmates are not being housed in the facility currently and that they are having to be transported back and forth for their court dates. And they do know that we are working on it.
Bryan, can you contact the judges and let them know when you're gonna start us working down there and see if we can work quality in session?
We can let them know once we get that final.
Okay.
I'll be sure of it.
Any other questions?
Well, I have some questions about finance if we really get into the approval of this thing, which are just, is that a motion?
No, I just have a few questions. I mean, if you've got a load on it, so you're gonna have some discussion.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we proceed with the capital project in the total amount of $1,535,300.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, my question is this, we're putting all this money into this. Now, if this is a capital budget, this is a question for finance, I guess, if this is set off as a separate item, how is this included in the budget that we're deliberating today?
Actually, it'll be included in the current year budget, the fiscal year 18, 19 budget. If you look at the budget amendment request sheet, we're appropriating fund balance in the general fund in the amount of $1.5353 million to transfer to that capital project fund.
Okay, this is another one of the things that I complain about that has to do with the financial management of the county. Here we are in the last month of the year, the sheriff's already wasted more money than any other I've ever seen in my lifetime, and now we're throwing another million and a half as a cover-up job that won't come back and you won't see it again. This should be included in the budget that's upcoming, and the sheriff's operations should be adjusted accordingly. Either way that you look at it, if we're putting all this money in here to take prisoners into a capital budget out of the county and we're not adjusting the sheriff's budget, there's more and more money in there for the sheriff to waste. So, you know, we, this is another example of poor finance.
I actually had a conversation with our new auditors this morning about that, because there was a question in my mind how to handle the safekeeping expense piece, because that is an operational piece. And he said it's completely appropriate for you to account for that in the capital project fund, because our goal is to try to track those total expenses as the project goes on. So it's appropriate to put those all in the capital project fund, and at the end of the project, we will take the safekeeping cost and put them back into the jail department and show them as an operational expense. But that'll happen at the end of the project.
Bryan?
That is based on the advice from our CPR auditor today. Thank you.
I think the finance officer answered the question.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, well, I still object to this methodology, because it doesn't, it doesn't let you track actual operating expenses. It puts them over here, it puts them over there, and I don't know how you're gonna pull them back if it's included in this year's budget, the year that we are in right now. When does it go back? It becomes another increase in spending that you never see with a budget going forward for next year that covers, that covers the expense for the whole year. It's a way of permitting expenses, and that's all that it is.
Man?
Yeah, sorry, I'm a few minutes late. I had business out of town, the weather kept me from getting here. I'm not retired yet, young man like yourself. But what I surmise, being late, is that we're talking around $900,000 if you get the jail doors fixed. Is that about right? Man, that's just a number thrown up there. We don't know if that's a finite number. It could go down from there with a little management. Am I correct?
It's on that sheet right here.
Okay, well, that's fine. I just got here. So, okay, yeah, okay. So, Hood, let me ask Hood, he knows what's going on. Am I right, Hood? That's right, I do know what's going on in here. That's what's going on. Okay, I don't understand why we're putting $1.5 million in a fund when we're only talking about 900, and we're gonna try to do it for less than that if we can get some of these, these working parts that are old, machined, and tooled, and done cheaper than this grandiose plan that some of you may or may not have. There's always many different ways to skin a cat, especially when you're opening up the box, so to speak. Some of you think it's Pandora's Box, maybe it won't be. I'm an optimistic guy. Hopefully, it would just be a box, there'll be problems in there, they will be solvable for less money than $900,000. With a little management, maybe that will happen. So while we've taken $1.5 million from taxpayers and putting it in the fund, we're, okay, we've got this money in here, let's spend it. That's what'll happen in six to nine months from now. So I am actually hoping that we don't do it that way. Let's just appropriate $900,000, or what is it, the amount, the exact amount?
If you look on the third page of the agenda item, you'll see the exact amounts. There's permitting assistance at $25,000. There's capital improvements of $70,980, $728,000. There's $630,000 for safekeeping, and there's $82,300 for contingency in the project. Those are your actual numbers. Those are the numbers that were, that the contractor came in and looked at the doors, which is what the board asked them to do. So these are as best of numbers as we have.
So you think it's gonna cost $630,000 to keep the inmates light?
What we've accounted for is, I believe it's correct, 72 inmates per day at $55 for six months. Is that correct?
All of them?
All of them, so that we know that we've got it covered in case everyone have to be out of there. Now, that number should be less, but we don't want it to be more.
I would, I would suggest that we go with less than $1.5 million.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waters?
I stand, it sounds like that maybe the best thing to do is shut it down. Is that what you're saying?
I know you wanna build a new jail, but I don't think we're ready for that yet. It's gonna cost a lot of money. I think we keep it going for now.
That's, that's the whole purpose of this capital budget, is to cover the true cost. Mr. Chairman, unless anybody else has got anything to say, I call for a vote.
No, I have something else. Just throw my rock.
Go ahead.
I simply wanna throw a rock. If you hadn't killed a jail five years ago, we wouldn't be having this conversation, you wouldn't be talking about this money.
Mr. Chairman? Just so the board will be clear, what we're asking you to do is give us the authorization to move forward. We will bring back to you a contract that details all this. This is a formal, it's in the formal range, which means it's gotta come back to the board with a formal contract. So these are the numbers that you needed to have to be able to look at it and understand it. So what we'll bring back, and it'll probably be a special call meeting, once we get the contract negotiated, if you want to move forward, then we will bring you that back as a board to approve that final contract. Now, the reason this is put in a project ordinance is because it has to survive the fiscal year. Otherwise, once, if we didn't do that, if we put it in this year's budget, then at the end of the fiscal year, it would die. It is in a project budget that allows it to sustain itself over multiple fiscal years if it needs to, and then it is closed out. It allows us to track all the costs associated with it. As the finance officer was saying, we know, we've talked to the auditors about putting the safekeeping in there. The reason the safekeeping is put in there is so at the end of the day, when this project is completely done, you and I will be able to look at that and say, this is exactly how much money was spent on this entire project. We won't have to go chasing this and chasing that. At the end of it, then they take the operational piece, which is the safekeeping, and put it back into the budget. You'll be asked to make a budget amendment that rolls it back into whatever current fiscal year we're in at that time. So just want the board to be clear about that. That is the way it's done, that is the way the auditors have told us we have to do it, and they're the ones who are, who are telling us that. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe that we put this thing out for bid for two vendors, right, Christina? And we got a no bid. Three, and we got a no bid.
Yes, sir. We issued it twice. We issued it once and we had zero responses. We reissued it and we had one response.
And I think that technician was pretty clear when he talked to you and I on the phone about what we got over there and how finicky that equipment is and how it was built, and the whole history on run-up model.
Yes, sir. And along those same lines, this is, again, within the same ballpark figure of the other vendors that visited our facility, and they would give us a ballpark number, and then they elected not to bid on it.
Mr. Bryan?
Bryan, what you're telling us, if you're gonna take that $1.5 million out of the fund balance in your market for the jail project, and then whatever is left, if there's any left, it goes back into the fund balance automatically, is that correct?
That's correct. When the project ordinance closes out, any funds that are remaining in the project ordinance roll back into fund balance. Yes, sir.
Do you have one, please?
I have some questions. Let's follow the money for just a second. We're gonna, we're gonna put this, make this an active ordinance right now, but most, the money's all gonna be spent next year. So if we have $400,000 in outside safekeeping funds that we spend next year, when the ordinance is closed out, where is that money gonna be credited to or debited to, whichever way you wanna look at it, in the budget system?
Jail division. The jail department.
No, I'm talking about the time.
The time?
Which set of books is it gonna go into?
If we expend any safekeeping in the next 20 days, it will go in this fiscal year, but we don't anticipate that, so it'll be next year. It's whenever the expense occurs, whatever year it occurs in.
So the money would be credited against the budget for next year?
If it is spent in next year, yes.
What about the capital part of that? What about the hardware and all that stuff? Is it gonna be credited against any part of the budget, or is it, is that just a reduction in fund balance?
Well, we're completely transferring the full $1.535 million tonight to a capital project fund to complete the project. So we'll take the head and the fund balance in this current fiscal year 18, 19 for the full amount.
So that'll show up in the audit?
Yes.
That we're gonna get as a reduction of the $1.5 million for that.
Yes.
Now, the next year, when we spend the money, I understand what happens to the money that we spend for safekeeping. That's gonna be, go back and be taken as an expense in the sheriff's budget?
Right.
Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Now, what about the capital part of that? The hardware, installing the hardware, the other $900,000, where does that go?
It'll be capitalized as a fixed asset, as a major improvement to the jail and depreciated.
So it won't come out of the sheriff's budget? It'll, it'll be taken as a capital item and an adjustment?
Only the operational piece will come out of the jail department next year. The rest will be capitalized as a fixed asset and depreciated, just as any normal large capital improvement would be.
Commissioner Waters, will you repeat the motion, please?
The budget amendment and the capital project ordinance say it has $1,535,000.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes. Bryan, you ready to start the budget?
We are ready for the board to tell us where you wanna be. Anita has the spreadsheet from where we were at the last discussion, and we're ready to move forward with, with any changes that the board may have, or any direction from you on where you wanna be.
Commissioner Waters?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start by moving the $179,000 from current expense for the school system back over to the capital. That would be a wash, but we would recommend that we move it from current expense to the capital fund for the school system. That totals $179,000.
Well, I would like the budget ordinance to have this statement in it that none of these funds will be used for the personal use of any person who draws a check from Beaufort County. That's, well, Frankie's motion hasn't been voted on. I thought we were gonna blow all of these into one thing and vote on them. Do I need to make it a motion or does Frankie get special treatment that I don't get? No, my understanding is we're having a discussion of how we wanted to change the budget from the way that we last left it.
I would draw my motion and allow you to make that motion again, because your motion is affecting everything that we're doing tonight. I didn't realize that we had that many people that were using county funds for personal use, but in fact, everything that you're doing. We're talking about drawing a budget ordinance? You know, this'll be a sentence in the budget ordinance, that's all it will be. And that's what I'm saying. Go ahead and make the motion, and see if you get a second and it gets approved, then we'll go back. I withdraw my motion. It's on the floor.
I thought that we were having a discussion. You never actually said this is a motion. You said, "I would like to see." I thought we were having a discussion of how we might want to change the budget, which I think is the proper thing for us to be doing, unless you guys are playing the power play, where you come in and make a motion, you got four votes and slam it down and we all go home. I mean, which is it? I, I can guarantee you, I don't have four motions. I guess the question is, do you have four? Well, the question that needs to be resolved for me is how are we going to proceed in this budget? Are we going to sit here with commissioners making motions and individual things being voted on? Are we going to have a discussion and then go back and ask for motions on those things? Mr. Chairman, how are we going to do this?
Brian, how would you like for us to proceed? Well, I would, because I know you're going to want to put something up on the board for us to say as we go along, hopefully, if that's possible.
We are happy to do however the board likes us to do. We simply have a spreadsheet that started where we were last time, and as you went through that budget discussion last time, you said we want to do this, we want to do that. We showed it. If we'll go back and stay on that, please, you can see that. Mr. Chairman, it doesn't matter to me. We, we work at the discretion of the board, so we'll do whatever y'all, as a, as a, as a majority wants today.
Go ahead, Mr. Budget.
Commissioner Richardson, state, state your comment again about, is it nobody that lives in Beaufort County can do it again?
Well, my, my, well, what I was wanting to see in, in the final document is a statement that says, no, none of the money that's appropriated in this budget can be used for the personal benefit of any person who draws a check from Beaufort County. Well, the personal benefit.
Bring it to me, this is my IQ.
Well, the personal benefit means people that are driving cars for personal use. We have people that are driving cars for personal use that, that, that should not be driving cars for personal use. Now, I'm not talking about deputies that drive cars to and from work. I'm talking about other uses that have been discovered over the past year, that have been brought to the attention of the public, and the county, the board doesn't want to do anything about it to protect the taxpayers. So, are you going to allow the, the funds that you're appropriating in this budget to be used for the personal gain and the personal benefit of employees of Beaufort County?
Commissioner Richardson, why, why would we hearing that now? Why would we hear it all during the year if that's going on?
You did hear it all during the year, and you did everything you could do to keep from doing anything about it, and that's why it's coming up as a part of the budget ordinance. The budget ordinance is the proper place to address this, if you haven't addressed it before now. So, what you're doing, if you don't put this in there, is you're condoning, condoning the stealing of county money by employees of the county. Do you condone the thievery of taxpayers' money by employees of the county? And if you do, you need to vote this down.
Does anyone want to comment on how that can be?
Mr. Chairman, I would have to comment on it. Um, you know, personal benefit of county funds is against the law. If we are aware of that, we will take appropriate actions to do that. I know there's been some discussion with the board about the use of sheriff's office vehicles. I think that's been clearly discussed. If anyone is aware of someone using a county vehicle that is not under another elected official, I would, I appreciate them letting me know that. We will investigate and find out. I do need that we have people drive vehicles home. They're on call, and they, and they do that work, and they're supposed to be doing that work. But to arbitrarily throw out and say that people are stealing from the county is, is inappropriate.
Well, that's perfectly a judgment thing on your benefit. I happen to represent the taxpayers much more than you do, and it's my responsibility to protect their money.
And Commissioner Richardson, if you give a list of names of people who are doing that, I'll be glad to investigate it, and we'll take proper, appropriate, appropriate disciplinary action with me, but I've not heard that from you.
Well, I don't know why we're having this debate, because it's a real simple thing to me, being a country boy, and kind of stupid, that you don't steal from your employer, and you guys seem to have a problem with that.
Well, can you identify the problem, that who, where, why?
I'm not going to be put into a box. Either you support the county employees stealing from the county, or you don't support thievery. So, you're, you're setting your pace right now, and I don't think you look very good to the people out there that are writing checks to the county for taxes. We're talking about a policy item. I've tried to get you to do something on specific items, and you have refused.
Turn your mic off, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, unless there's a second to his motion, I would suggest that we go to a straw debate on each one of these items that we bring up, and see if it passed the muster. All right, if we can't, if you don't agree to do that, then I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Yeah. Yeah, you got a second. Just, it's going to be a five-two, but you got a second.
Yeah, you got it. It's fine.
Any discussion?
Well, I'm believing that for, I'm not going to vote for it, because to me, I mean, I don't condone stealing. But if I knew, if I knew of anybody's doing it, and who'd I know who's doing this? We, we need to move on. Now, my favorite sheriff in, in this whole country is Festus Hagan. I don't, I don't think that we need to eavesdrop, or, and if, and some of the things that you say is going on, if it's going on, we can't fix it. We don't have that authority. The manager said, the manager said, if you can get a list and give it to a human investigator, that's all we can ask of him. Investigate, if you find it to be true, fine. That's all.
Gameplay. This exercise is about is gameplay. That's what you guys are doing, and I'm okay, as long as you can hold you up in front of the public. That's public speaking. You know, I don't think public appreciation is.
Okay, Stan.
Yeah, the, the Festus defense notwithstanding, I think what Hood started with before this got blown up was to ask the board, as you guys were discussing the, the schools and 179,000 dollars, keeping that in the capital budget. And I thought that's where you were going to begin with, was that that had to stay in the capital budget and not become part of the current expense conundrum. But I think what Hood was started with was, we need to be fiscal, more fiscally sound and mindful in oversight to make sure this does not occur. And he was just asking for a vote of confidence from this board. And I think it went beyond that. And that's why Hood, do you, is that what I, am I correct in that assumption?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, Hood has a way of becoming acerbic once he sees a brick wall. And he saw a brick wall, and so he got a little acerbic, and that's just Hood. But to know Hood as well as I do, Hood is just asking for fiscal responsibility and oversight in this regard, and I will always support that, just as I will always support transparency.
Okay, time to vote. Is it, does anybody else? Time to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. Five to two, motion fails. Do you want me to make my motion? Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, my motion is that we move the 179,000 from current expense to capital funding for the school system.
Motion is seconded and discussion.
I believe this is to move it back where it started out.
That's correct. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, so, so 179 will go to capital and, and stay there. Are there any provisions by this board to ask if it remain as capital and not be shifted to current expense? Go here, Mark. Done it before. I, as a longtime commissioner, somebody's been up here a long time, the, the idea is if, if these commissioners cut into the current expense dramatically, then they'll probably go and get that capital expense. So, what I'm asking is, will this board ask that that capital expense money remain capital expense, and then quite possibly give the, the schools some more current expense money so they can get by? They have some problems, I realize that.
This is not a, this is not a cut in the current expense. We're just moving it back to capital. Which will be a- So, it's zero neutral?
Yeah, but if you go up 179, that's going to be 179 more this year than last year, if, if.
No, it's, it's the same as last year on both current and capital if we make this switch back.
By all means, I would suggest that, because you're, you're, you got them at zero right now. Okay. Very well. I'll vote for that.
Those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind everyone to please put their microphone button, because it doesn't pick up in the back on the recording when you don't do that unless another microphone close to you is, so, please be respectful of that. Thank you.
Is there another item we want to discuss?
Well, I'm a very open item. Uh, the, you know, we really need to remove that one deputy that the sheriff kept in his total for the year, because he lost, he had a contract, he performed very poorly on the contract, and the people canceled the contract. And so, he's, we're keeping that as a full-time employee now. Up, up until this year, that, that contract was paid for by somebody else, it wasn't paid for by the taxpayers. We need to reduce, I'm, I'm going to reduce the total number of sworn deputies in the sheriff's department by one. That is my motion.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can we, can we ask Chief Deputy Rose if he would comment on what this one person is? Do they have other duties, is my question?
Well, first of all, if I can, let me respond to, if, if you have any data, if you've got any statement from Young Williams, who actually spoke to me before, before they canceled the contract, I would like to hear that. We did not under, we did not undershoot anything. We had a discussion with them, they were paying about $71,000 in a revenue that was to perform services that we perform for anyone. If they pay the $30 for a service fee on the paper, we, we do that. They asked me, looking at other counties that were around, that are not under contract, that are, that have roughly the same amount of papers that are served, that as a percentage, we actually serve more papers than that are served at that point. And they asked me if I thought that they needed a contract, and I thought, I told them no. I told them that we would provide the same service if they paid the $30 fee, and that we would still perform at a percentage that's higher than the other counties. And they decided to not go with the contract. Now, as, as to what that person was doing, that person has been a bailiff for several years. They were a 4D paper server. A lot of that time is in court and child support enforcement. They would be up there serving papers, they would serve papers out in public, and they would do a good job with that. When the contract was done, they still did bailiff duties, they did, they still served papers, they still do a lot of the same functions. There was a corporal at the time that the position was cut. The sergeant over the bailiffs was reassigned and is now an SRO doing a great job. That person was the next person in line, and they interviewed, and they were promoted to sergeant, and now that person is the sergeant over the bailiffs. Now, if you look at a position by position, if you cut the position, then we can, you know, have that position cut without having to fire anybody, but if you ask me specifically if we need that position, then the answer is yes. We don't have enough bailiffs as it is. That person is doing a bailiff role. We asked and we tried to get some help in the courtroom. We didn't. So, now, I'm telling you that we need more help. And now, if we get another cut in that, then that's just, it, it's, it's a slap in the face for an agency that's trying to do it the right way.
Commissioner Woodus.
Gee, what you're telling us, this young man did not get fired.
No.
Gee, what you're telling us, he did not get fired?
He did not get fired.
You don't even talk to the people over at Young Williams, and, and he's going to be doing, basically, somebody's going to be doing basically the same thing that he was doing at the same level, that he was over there doing the job. Is that correct?
The conversation started on the contract was on paper service count and percentages. They showed a percentage of like counties, like in size, like in paper count. And we, without even looking at that, that position, we were serving papers at a percentage to the point that a lot of the other counties where they didn't have the contract, and sometimes we were actually serving at a higher percentage rate than that.
And then he wasn't just doing, he was also working in the facilities at the courthouse.
Yes. Where a lot of the times where, you know, just to get into how that works a little bit, a lot of the times where people who have a, a paper, whether it's a criminal summons, whether it's a show calls, or whether it's a warrant service for, for not paying their child support, they're still coming to court. So, a lot of those paper services are actually going on in court when they show up there, which is the smart thing to do.
So, we're not, so we're not enlarging this there? He was, he was already on board, he was just working at Young Williams and the courthouse, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, so, if, right now, we don't have enough bailiffs. Once that contract was over, we were able to get more bailiff work out of that position.
Any more discussions?
Well, yeah, there is.
What, what I can tell you is this, Charlie, Young, Young Williams told me is they weren't getting service is the reason that they did away with the contract. So, uh, what I, the way I look at things is-
Who did you speak to?
We're not going to get into personalities. You guys always want to go into personalities, and that's what you've done with this. Well, when a guy was promoted, he was a great guy. That doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about. Personalities are out of-
We just need to get the facts.
Well, the facts are that you had a contract, and they canceled the contract, and they told me they canceled the contract. No justification. I'm not getting into personalities, Charlie. Charlie, I am the Title IV representative for the county, so you're talking to Moses. I'm the one that knows. So, you can stand up there and tell all the stuff you want to tell, but it doesn't fly. Now, what happened was, they weren't getting service, they canceled the contract. And where I'm from, you have an employee, and the contract was canceled, so you're minus one employee. I don't care where that employee is. I don't care if you wanted to keep him, I don't care if he's the greatest person in the world, it doesn't matter to me. But you should be minus one employee.
You're not selling the truth, Mr. Moses.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, I, I bet you are, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Three. All those opposed? Four, three. Motion fails. Uh, Brian, can you give us an update on the Senate up in Raleigh regarding capital expenses could be coming down for the school? I know one time there was some money earmarked for that.
Um, currently in the Senate's budget, if I recall correctly, in the House's budget, they wanted there to be a bond issue for capital expenditures. You know, the Association of County Commissioners has lobbied for years to try to increase school capital funding. Um, if I recall correctly, the House, the House said, we want to put a bond issue out there. Um, the Senate said, we want to do it as a pay-as-you-go. Looking at the Senate budget that has been put out there, they have essentially earmarked, I think it's, they sit there and pull out a state capital, building capital, 1.2, 1.6 billion dollars, and out of that, they've allocated a certain amount for each county. Um, as I recall, there's like $12 million allocated for Beaufort County for the school system. There's about $5 million allocated for the community college. If all that stays in the budget, then there's a process by which the schools and the community college would have to go and submit projects to an office that's been, that would be established under that, under that piece, to review the plans and to sign off on them. And as long as, the way I read it, as long as those projects would extend the life by more than, by 10 years or more, they would be eligible. So, renovations, you recall previously with the community college, when the numbers came out, the bond money came out last time, they said you can't use it for certain things, you couldn't use it for renovations, you had to use it for new stuff. Um, this specifically says that it can be used for renovations and repairs as long as it extends the life by at least 10 years. There is some matching portion, but that matching portion, as I recall, is applied only to tier-three counties. Um, so, that, that's where it is now. What it all shakes out at the end to be, we don't know. Um, but that's where, that's where it currently is on the Senate, the Senate's piece, and then, um, they've got to appoint conferees to look at both of those budgets, the House budget and Senate budget, and come together on, on what they want to finally present to the governor, and whether the governor signs that or vetoes it.
Thank you. Uh, is there any items that need to be added to the, the budget?
Well, I have some other items. Did you have one, Jerry? Good. Well, you know, the, I understand that, I'm getting some complaints that there are some special salary increases for special employees that are buried in this budget. are some special salary increases for special employees that are buried in this budget that hasn't been presented to the commissioners, uh, born as a whole. Uh, is that true?
Are you asking me that? No, that, that, we have made adjustments to salaries, absolutely, we've made adjustments to salaries, based on changes in jobs. Uh, if there's been additional duties, uh, added to, to, to folks throughout the year, uh, ever since I came to work for Beaufort County, we've made that. If there were substantial changes to the job, we've adjusted those. Um, that's within the purview of the personnel policy for the manager to do that. Um, and that is what we do. So, they are not hidden in here, they have been done, and, and there's not anything that this budget changes, um, to, to make anybody, and they're not special people. I would, I would say to you that, um, we look at every, if, if a department head brings us a, a request for a salary adjustment based on additional duties that have been provided under that, that position, then we look at it, we make sure that's correct. Um, I had that conversation with the HR director, I've had it with her every time we've discussed one of those, and, and it is within the personnel policy to be able to do that. So, it is not special treatment, uh, it is paying folks for additional responsibilities that they have.
Uh, is there a list of this budget book of people who are getting more than the COA, uh, beginning with this particular budget?
There is nobody especially listed in this budget that is getting anything if this budget is passed. There have been changes, like I said, ever since I came to work four years ago in Beaufort County, we've made changes to salaries based on additional duties that have been provided under positions. Now, if you want me to go back to, to four years ago and work my way forward, I'd be glad to do that, but I, I don't have a list. Um, and, and there's nobody in this budget that, if you adopt this budget, it changes anybody's salary.
Okay.
Those adjustments have been made based on changes in their duties and their responsibilities.
Okay, I, I would like to see the list for the last year, I wouldn't want you to go back four years, but I would like a list for the last year.
I'd be glad to provide that to you.
Commissioner Langley?
Okay, last week at our regular commissioners meeting, the superintendent and the school board came and, uh, did a presentation, which I didn't make any bones about it, I was not impressed with it. And there were a lot of folk here saying, um, that commissioners were going to close schools, schools, and which everybody realizes that commissioners do not close schools. The school board closes schools. But one of the things that some of the folk who was, especially see it right here, were here representing, uh, the Ed Tech Center. And one of the things that was presented to us, that if Ed Tech was costing, I think it was one point, one million dollars, and that if the commissioners did not fund it, they would have to close it. And it's my understanding that Ed Tech was already on the hit list to be closed, whether the commissioners actually gave one point one million or not. And also, um, there was a young lady, which was very offensive to me, that was pulled up, and it was stated that, "If you guys don't give us this money, that I'm going to have to lay her off." That is the thing that offended me more than anything else in the world, to have an employee put on the spot that way, uh, just to be used as an example. And I want to say this, that the board of commissioners and the school board, I, I thought our relationship had gotten really, really good. And I say to you this evening that what was done last Monday did a lot to set that relationship back. I mean, I'm just one of those people, if you have something to say to me, stand flat-footed and simply say it. No theatrics, no propaganda, but simply say what needs to be said, and if I'm going to support you, I'm going to support you. And if I'm not going to support you, then I'm not going to support you. So, having said all of that, this is exactly what Commissioner Langley thinks, and I don't know exactly how far it is going to go, but these are my thoughts. I propose that you do another one cent tax increase, and give the schools three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That will make the personnel whole, and the remaining of that penny goes into county, wherever, wherever you feel it needs to go. That's my motion.
Second. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Discussion.
Yeah, um, I need some verification, because I, I see where you're going with this, and I actually approve of it to, to some extent. But you're talking about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars going into current expense. Now, you say the county manages the other portion of that, how much is that, about two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
And is that going to be for capital expense?
Well, whatever the needs are in the county, I'm just saying, the county take advantage of that other two hundred thousand dollars, and wherever the county sees that it needs to go, let's do it that way. Now, those are my thoughts.
Uh, will you amend your motion? And I'll vote for this, if you'll amend your motion, if we raise the spending for the schools at one penny, and then we go and we really look at this budget in a real sense, and cut two pennies out of the budget, and then give one more penny back to the taxpayers. Now, I'll agree with that. And then, I'll go one step further. I, I will do that because I want to really, next year, really enforce a good bit of oversight and, and policy and management and, and budgeting, and I'd like to cut three pennies and give half of it to the school system, which would be one and a half percent, that which would, at, at today's standards, would take it up to about eight hundred thousand dollars for the school system, maybe nine hundred thousand, and we'll let them manage it any way they want to manage it. But I'm going to ask you commissioners to get serious and cut three pennies next year. So, you know, I'm going to vote for that. If you, would you amend it?
No, I will not amend that, and I, and I will tell you why. The, the school system got the same amount of money they got last year. And how they ended up with a, with a shortfall this year, it just, it just blows my mind. But for the sake of people keeping their jobs and, and, and not hurting the children, that is the purpose of my motion, but I, I'm not going to go along with the rest of it.
Well, since we're discussing this between one another, may I, may I digress? Uh, you understand, my position is, as, as someone who represents taxpayers, and that's my job, I, I, when I ran for office, I said I was going to do that, I'm going to do that. And I think my constituents, I could be wrong, my constituents would agree with me going along with spending more money, allocating more money to the school system, providing refined funds. Now, understand that we have, since I was commissioner back four, and a, a little over four years ago, we've increased over a hundred employees in Beaufort County. We're spending money crazily in Beaufort County. We spent over four million dollars, and you guys spent over four million dollars, I wasn't on the board then, Hood didn't have a second, but you guys spent over four million dollars on water meters. Water meters to save two jobs, is the way I understood it. Now, if it sold more, saved more than two jobs, that's great, but the math just doesn't work. And it doesn't work here, it doesn't work on increasing our employees by twenty-seven percent, nothing seems to be working math-wise. And so, we're, we're acting like giving the school system the same amount of money so they can manage at a lower level, while we go and spend money willy-nilly, just doesn't seem fair, and it doesn't seem right. So, I'm just asking that we get the math in balance. I mean, Lord knows people in America that can't do math. I want to see them talk and, and, and get on, on their soapbox, and they preach, and they haven't got one thing in their words that has anything to do with math or logic. So, let's get the math right up here amongst us, and let's help the school system to teach more math, so we don't have so many stupid people in America.
Thank you. Commissioner Waters?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would reference page thirteen in our budget book, and I realize that some of the commissioners have not looked at this page. But Commissioner Deathery just made a statement about a hundred employees. For the record, and the people that are here, it's fourteen and fifteen, and it's on the schedule just like this, and you can see that it's been marked up. We've increased our employees by sixty-eight, not one hundred. You know, he's loose with the numbers, so we've increased by sixty-eight. The most important thing in here is we've increased our public safety, which is EMS, which is our largest one, thirty-three employees, the jail, four, the sheriff, eight, and communications, five. The communications is the nine-one-one center, we added the, uh, medical dispatch part to it. So, that's fifty employees. If you divide fifty by sixty-eight, I know some people can't do that, that's seventy-four percent. So, just to correct that, I hope for the last time, we will not hear you say that we've done a hundred new employees since you went off the board.
We did. Commissioner Booth?
Oh, you're a liar.
Not too bad.
You're a liar. Hey, look at the page, look at the page, look at the page. I, I, I agree with, um, Commissioner Langley, and I'm not pleased, I'd be the first to tell you, I'm not pleased with this budget. I'd be the first to tell you, I'm, I'm, I'm just not pleased. But number one, sad to know I went to a meeting, and all I could hear, y'all closing schools. Pause for a minute. Y'all, a moment, that's not true. Uh, what I hear again is that we have meetings. I hate that, put my colleagues on the spot, but for my heart's sake, would any of y'all tell me that y'all went to a meeting about closing schools? Please, please tell me the day. If you didn't, tell me you didn't, so I can sleep better. And I hate that, and, and I hate that. But would any of y'all tell me that you went to a meeting about closing Ed Tech? Now, I don't know where these commissioners come from, but that's all I heard said. But insane that we can't punish kids and good employees by bad behavior. And I, I support putting money back, that's Commissioner Waters' idea, but I don't want to hear again, as long as I'm a commissioner the next three years, that I went to a meeting to close schools. Now, now, it bothered me, and I'm one of those that, that's the champion for education. And then you stand up here and say, "Little brothers, go to a school, pause again, that's not true. There's very few things that I miss at a school, very few." And I don't want to hear somebody come up to me again, especially when they know what they're talking about. And I was called to the meeting in the war. I was in Nashville at my board of directors meeting. There was a meeting calling the war, brothers. And I told them, "If you leave me," I, I come, call me on my cellphone, and I will come out of my meeting and ask any question, but I will swear to you, I have never due to a meeting to close no school in Beaufort County. Now, that disturbed me. Thank you. And I will support this motion.
You're second to the motion. It's been seconded. Right to second. Okay, well, good, we're debating the motion. I'm alive, I'm alive.
Yeah. One thing I'd like to say is, uh, I think we can all agree, there's nothing more important than our public schools, the Beaufort County School Boards or elected officials like us, and their focus should be providing quality education for our students and hopefully attracting more students into the public school system. There's been a lot of talk about hundred percent. I am confident that our teachers are giving currently a hundred percent, and a lot of them a lot more. So, I, I think we need to move on, we, we've got a good so, school system, but let's move forward on this.
The, uh, one of the things I'd like to mention here, we talk about the, the declining money at the schools. Population of schools over the last four or five years is down at least five hundred students. And we're putting, uh, a little more than two thousand dollars, the county is, into the, uh, per student, into education. Five hundred times two thousand is a million dollars. The school system already has a surplus of a million dollars, you know, that they've got, simply because of declining population in the schools. That came from the county. It's not like what they get from the state, which is based on ADA. We give them a constant sum of money, so it's not per pupil. So, I, I don't have much sympathy, I'm not going to support raising taxes and giving more money to the schools. Uh, I think schools need to do a better job of managing what they have, because there's someone who said in here, they didn't see how the school system managed to come out with two hundred thousand dollars of what it was in the hole this year. So, I'm, uh, I can't support that. We've got a declining population in the schools, and we don't need to be fluffing up more money for the schools.
Mr. Brown?
Um, I think everybody is right, is that I support the school system one hundred percent, and I would like to say the school system get that three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. But when we raise taxes, that's going to be two cents now. Two cents. If we're going to send all the money in there, and we raise taxes again, that's a, that's a million, two, I think. And, uh, people like us, right here on this podium, may be able to support and pay that extra two cents. But there's people in Beaufort County right now that, that can't not afford, people live on eighteen, sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars a year, and we keep raising taxes every year. Before long, we're going to be in a situation where people will not go up to pay their taxes, and that's what we're going to do. So, I say we find that three hundred and eighty-seven-five thousand dollars somewhere else and not raise taxes. I can't, I can't vote for raising taxes if we do it. Thank you.
Stand, commissioners.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of with, uh, Gary, Commissioner Brown on this. Uh, in fact, I think if push came to shove, if we could get you guys to go in there and get serious about this budget, even old Hood would go along with it, and he'd say, "Yeah, let's give the money to the school system, they can use it." We're going to find that money and a little bit more, because, as you say, uh, maybe, maybe I'm, I could be wrong with the numbers on the amount of employees. Let's say it's been five years, but there's been a hundred employees in the last five years. Last six months I was a commissioner, you guys got rid of me. I wasn't much good at all with this monumental wall I had to deal with. So, maybe that last year, it got slipped in, you know, the, you know, the liberal, uh, Republican Party and the liberal Democrat Party has held sway in this county for a long time, and I've had little effect, and it looks like I'm having little effect now. But I'm, ask you, I beg you, listen to Commissioner Brown, and let's see what we can do. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we, we had five nights of budget workshops where we went through, heard speakers from different departments come in here. We've had that opportunity. I mean, we're down now to the final, you know, if we give the schools three seventy-five, I will not support it if it comes out of our fund balance, because we're going to take one and a half million to fix this jail up. So, that's a, that's almost a two million dollar hit, and we're down to about twenty-two or twenty-three percent projected in this budget. So, you've got to realize that if we're going to do the things that we're talking about doing when it comes to maintenance, that's, that's the one percent that we're already talking about, or the one cent. So, the real goal is, if we've got a fiduciary responsibility, and I think some of you guys are trying to run from that, you, you either got to say that you're part of this, the solution, or you've got to find a way to cut it. And you guys keep saying, "Send it back to the department heads, send it back to the department heads." You're smart enough, why don't you just go ahead and say, "Take it out of EMS, take it somewhere." But you don't do that. You don't do that. So, it requires a tax increase, a wheel back, and not giving the schools any additional money.
Brown? I think, I think you misunderstood what I said. I, I said that I couldn't support the one cent tax addition. I said, "Let's find that money somewhere else."
Right.
That means find it in the budget and give it to the school system. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is not a lot of money, folks, not when you're talking with a budget of fifty-nine million dollars, sir. Let's go find that three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and give it to the school system and don't raise taxes. That's what I said.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah. First of all, Gary, we're really talking about five-
First of all, Gary, we're really talking about five-hundred-and-seventy-five with the commissioners having the say over two-hundred, I understand, which I think if you're going to do it, you need to go ahead and do the five, to find the entire five-seventy-five and let the schools have all of it and do what they wish with it, because they can allocate better than we can. I think we've proved that over the last four years. But you say that we're not part of the solution. We're not part of the progressive solution. I will agree with that. We're not progressives. We are regressive in our desire to represent the taxpayers of Beaufort County and hold the line on spending. Now, we are having some natural growth in our tax base in Beaufort County, and yet we're still spending more money than we don't have, and we're asking the taxpayers for three straight years to come up and shoulder that burden. Now, I'm, I, it's not because Hood and I can't win up here, and Gary's helping us right now. There's no way we can win. You guys have a wall to, to, to work for bureaucracy. You guys represent bureaucracy, and I've seen you operate. This is part of what you do. We work for the taxpayers and for management and oversight and policy and budgeting. That's what we do. So there's no way we can defeat you with our numbers, and we realize that. Because we, until we see that you're serious about cutting ever, anytime. I mean, you did cut, you know, the funding for the filming of this meeting, and that adds to a little bit of opaqueness, and I get that. But until you are ready to cut, do some real cuts, why should we even open our mouths through the budget workshops, yet we do? Exactly. This is, this is, this is where the rubber meets the road right now. This is, you guys are going to do something tonight, so we're going to, we're going to make it known where we stand tonight. This is, this is the wall that we're putting up. It may be small. It may not rise to the stature of your wall, your progressive wall, but we're going to do our best anyway.
Mr. Brown? Any other questions? Would you restate your motion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes?
They get the final numbers.
You're working on the final numbers, Dave. You'll give us just a second. And the attitude, Commissioner Langley?
Yes, I have, I have one, one further item, and that is from the Partnership for Children, the ten thousand dollars they requested for the teen pregnancy program. That is my motion.
A second. Any discussion?
Hi. Is, is that the same program, Commissioner Langley, that was being done through higher heights?
It's not a wash, because the, what higher heights was doing was not included in the budget, so this is simply to put it back in the budget.
Any other things that need to be added to the, to the budget? I'm just saying, I've got a motion in a second. You had discussion, but, but you can't have another motion on top of that. You need to deal with that motion first. Well, I, I just take note that it's kind of interesting that we're sitting here, is there anything else that needs to be added to the budget? Never during the course of this budget has anybody said, "Is there anything that needs to be taken out of the budget?" We started with scratch and we built it up. Yes?
Mr. Richardson is wrong. You're wrong.
The board during the budget workshops voted to increase the tax rate by one cent and put that into capital improvements. That's the revenue line you'll see on the left, 575. There is also, let's track it on the right side as well. So you'll see on the right side, so you balance out, you increase capital by 246,075. All right. Then if you go back on the other side, you'll see where you increased the one penny for 375. You'll see that on the right, and then the additional 200 that comes out of that 575. You'll see on the left, there's a revenue offset of $15,474 for the state portion of the DSS position that you added. That 68,594 is the total cost of the DSS position. It is offset by $15,474 in state money that comes into that. So we have to show it fully on both sides. You've just added the Partnership for Children at 10. You added the NC East Alliance at 14, 251. You added the Drug Recovery Court, and you did the 2% COLA, both for all county employees as well as BHM at 2%. You took out and moved the original contingent, the original money for the school system out of current expense and moved it back down into capital. So that essentially took both of those out. They were revenue, they were offsetting. So that's why you don't see that anymore. You're back to where you were. Down at the bottom, you took out the expenditure for the lobbyist. You took out the expenditure for paying someone outside to do the videotaping. It will still be done. It would just be done in-house instead of outside.
Will it be on that CD?
Yes. Yes.
Be distributed to the same places it's being distributed to now?
Yes, sir.
The libraries and all the other CDs and all that?
Yes, sir. The only change is that it will be done in-house instead of paying somebody outside to do it.
Will we be able to do meetings where we're somewhere other than here?
If you want to do that, then you need to contract with somebody to do that off-site.
Will you do something local, like in Walker?
It'll be the board's decision to do that.
Well, how about the school board meeting?
You are not paying to fund that taping anymore. I assume if the school board wants to continue to do that, they'll need to. I mean, I think the comment was made by the commissioners during the budget workshop was that if that needed to be done, it needed to be funded by the school system. You'll see that there's a difference of $10,000. See the yellow where it says delta? That's the difference. So what we need to understand from you, because you just did the 10,000 for the Partnership for Children, do you want us to take that? And what we're proposing to you is that we take the $200,000 and simply show that as a contingency line item. Now, you can't, according to Budget and Physical Control Act, you can't put more than 5% in contingency. You've got plenty, you've got plenty of room there, so it's no big deal. You can put it in there, and anything that goes into contingency is not spent unless the board approves it. It's not just a line item that we normally spend. Any expenditures out of contingency come back to the board for approval. So if we put that $200,000 in there, it's got to come back to the board for approval anytime money is spent out of contingency. Just want to be clear with that. So you've got a delta of $10,000. The question for the board is, do you want to reduce the contingency by 10,000 and make that $190,000? Or do you want to move over here and add 10,000 to fund balance appropriated from 51,395 to 61,395?
I make a motion that we reduce the contingency fund to 190 to cover the $10,000.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
You're back to zero on your delta. So now it shows the budget after changes from the original recommended budget are now 59,638,743, and they are balanced based on expenditures and revenues.
Are we ready to move forward with the ordinance?
If this is where you want to be, we need about another 10 minutes so we can plug these numbers into the budget ordinance. So you have it on paper, and the official ordinance is available for you to then vote on. I want you to vote on this. We want to put it in the ordinance. Because that's what you saw before.
We're ready.
You could give us about 10 or 15 minutes.
Has everyone had time to look over the ordinance?
Where does it say the tax rate for the general fund?
Section 2.
Are there any questions? We'd be glad to answer them.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Let's get a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I approve the revised 2019-2020 budget ordinance as presented.
I'll second. Discussion?
Well, this, I'm going to say the same thing that you used to say on the budget. This is a budget that's full of fat. This is a budget that no effort has been put into to try to reduce expenses of the county. Repeat items are still in this budget from last year that will last 10 years before they're replaced. None of that has been taken out. That is the problem with a continuation budget. You heard these guys sit up here today and say, "Well, all we did was took it and added expense to it." There has been no effort to cut expense, and anybody that runs any kind of a business knows that things change and that expenses within that business change. Some things are eliminated and some things are added. That's not the case in government budgets in Beaufort County. They continue to grow. We are a county of declining population. I have a great concern for the family with children, that the two people in the family are having to work to keep that family going. Those are the people that I feel the most about, and those are the people that we need to be looking after. The basic whole family that's not eat up with drugs and alcohol, and those are the people that I'm fighting for. And I'm not going to vote for this budget because it's a wasteful budget, full of fat and bad management.
Anyone else? Do you want...
I was under the impression that this budget has been reconciled to be two pennies above where the manager started from.
It is.
It is two pennies? Okay. Am I reading it right?
Paragraph 2.
Reading paragraph 2.
Mr. Tenziger, we were originally at 61.5 cents, so you're now at 60.
Okay. Yeah, okay, got it, got it. Well, I would like to continue, but the manager brought us a budget of 61.5%. He did his job. He gave us a good starting point. But it was up to us to take that budget and reconfigure it in a way that best represented our constituents. Now, if you guys feel like your constituents are okay with raising taxes and doing what's progressive for the county, then I'm all in favor of you commissioners doing that, and I champion your right to do so. I think you're wrong, but you have that right. If you're, if it's such that you've promised something else to others over the years, but all of a sudden you could see just how badly Beaufort County needs all this raising of the taxes, then you'll have to answer for that when you run for office. So I think we would have been wise to look at this harder and stronger, and I can tell you right now, with July starting and August right behind it, and that's our new year, I will work with any of you to institute whatever policy, whatever oversight, whatever good management we can do to lower our costs here in Beaufort County. And I'm going to be pushing for it, and I would like a little help. I don't want to see this giant wall where whatever I say and do makes no dag-on difference. I know I'm not a progressive, but that should still not exclude me from the debate. So I'm going to ask that we look at this next year. Let's do something to get back in a reasonable rate back when we were in the 50 cent range, and let's just try to do things differently.
Anyone else? I'm going to vote. All those in favor of the ordinance for 1920, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Order 3. Motion passes. Budget is adopted. Anything else?
And just for the board, remember, we will probably be bringing back to you, depends on how fast we get that contract put together for the jail locking system, but for the county attorney, take a look at it. We may ask you to come back in session before the first of the year. If not, we'll do it the first meeting of the fiscal year. But our hope is to get it to you ahead of that time. Thank you.